Anyone who wants, we're gonna start this with a prayer and anybody that wants to participate, that's fine, and if you don't, that's fine too.
Hello, I'm Paul Arhens. Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, Lord, together, to be able to talk and discuss the things that confront us, Lord. We pray that you guide everything that we do here, Lord. We pray that you show us what needs to be done to be best for the people, Lord. And just pray that you guide us, lead us, direct us this evening. In Jesus' name we ask. Amen.
And for y'all that don't know, this is Andrea's father, Andrea Kennedy's father, Gary. And Andrea is our track co-chair, and she is an asset that can't be lived without. And her daddy is her captain of her fan club, and a wonderful way I said. Thank you all for coming. I know there's a whole bunch of stuff going on, and I appreciate what it is to give up a few minutes and come and talk and meet about things. I am so grateful. Thank you so much. There's a whole lot of folks that could not be here tonight that are very important to some of the things that we're talking about. First and foremost, I wanted to mention our county judge executive, Mr. Taka Vanier, who is here in Johnson County, a huge supporter of Trail Town and the Kentucky Mountain Regional Recreation Authority, and anything and everything to do with furthering and bettering our communities and our region. He's not feeling well this evening, and really needed to be at home, but I wanted y'all to know what a staunch supporter he is of this and how appreciative he is of everyone that's participating in this, every community up and down the river. And I wait for a river to go, I don't want to leave anybody out. Part of the, one of the reasons we're here tonight is something super, super exciting is going on, and it has to do with this document right here. This is an interlocal agreement on the Blue Water Trail, and we're calling the Blue Water Trail the Chatterwell Trace Trail. And for those of you that have lived, who's lived here all your life? All your life, growing up, what'd you call that river that runs down through here? Big Sandy. And you're not alone. Everybody that grew up anywhere along this river has called that river Big Sandy. That river technically is called the La Viza Fork. And to be even more technical than that, that was a bastardization of the first European name given to it, which was Louisa Fork. But before that, Native American people lived here for many, 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 many more moons than we now have been here, and they called it the Chatterwell. And that was shining base. And they used it for thousands of years to travel, to hunt, to move things, to move people. And so when we got to talking about this river trail, what were we gonna call it? Louisa, La Viza Fork, the Russell Fork that runs into the La Viza Fork that runs into the Big Sandy? You know, what were we gonna call this one entity that we're trying to promote? And when we talked about it, we came up with the idea to just go back to its original name. And then, you know, we had the components, we had the Russell Fork, and the La Viza, and the Tug, and the Big Sandy, all together. And our part, we're calling it the Chatterwell Trace. Pretty exciting. You know, we don't have a board to put it on, but this is the product of a lot of people, a lot of people working in synergy with each other, and particularly in local governments. The local government agreement is signed by everyone from Elkhorn City to Catletsburg. That is a huge, huge thing. Anybody ever heard of local governments getting along regularly?
Not this region.
Sometimes. Not this region, exactly. Sometimes in our history, and more often than is, has been good for us, they have not gotten along, for whatever reasons. Sometimes it was just political things, party things, you know, things that really didn't make any difference. We have reached an apex in our economic planning of our region. In a post-coal economy, we now realize, all of us realize, that individually, we are not gonna stand alone and have a significant impact, one that's significant enough to carry our economy. But together, and if you'll look at the top of this map up here, at the county shaded there, those counties are the ones that have signed resolutions that are involved in this agreement to promote this river, because it's for our own benefit, it's for our good to grow our economy. This is the entire, just about the entire eastern Kentucky region.
Who's the white spots?
I'm not gonna say, because we're gonna keep it positive. So the impact of this is tremendous. I'm gonna lay this up here, you all are welcome to look at it any time. The impact of having a 164-mile river trail that is endorsed by Kentucky Fish and Wildlife, that's endorsed by Kentucky Tourism, both regular tourism and adventure outdoor tourism, and every local government whose lands touch that river is tremendous. Now, when we have, when we're promoting that, we're promoting that as a region, and we have much more resources than each of us would have individually to do that. How much fun would it be to go to a kayaking thing where you got to kayak two miles and that was the end of the story? Not much fun. Not much fun. That when you get tourists here and they can get on the river, and these guys back here can attest to this, these are our in-house river rats tonight, when you can get on the river and achieve some distance, you're gonna stay in that area for a little while.
Makes all the difference. It makes all the difference.
It makes all the difference. Now, we're gonna be able to capture a market that's not just for a day, maybe it's for a week, maybe it's for two weeks, they're gonna spend in our region, traveling down this waterway, fishing, stopping in the towns, enjoying what they have to offer, you know. The economic impact is huge. And it's because of these local government leaders having enough vision to understand that working as a team is so much more effective than working against each other. And I'm very, very pleased to tell you all that we have all but two of the signatures needed to complete the entire interlocal agreement for the entire waterway. And that includes West Virginia, and we're in the works to include Virginia, where the actual headwaters are. So that's 164 miles of trail, and a ton of potential. And we're doing it in synergy with the Tug Fork, who is also, the friends of the Tug are also doing their Blue Water Trail. When this is completed, and I'll let our speaker tell you more about that, we will have an entire river system, just about, that is designated as trails. That is a tremendous thing. It's, when you hear people talking about low-hanging fruit, anybody ever heard that terminology? That's the stuff that's easily got. That's the stuff you don't have to build, you don't have to create. We didn't create this river, honey, the good Lord did, a long, long time ago. And, but it's ours to enjoy, it's ours to promote, it's ours to encourage folks, other folks, to come and enjoy. So it's huge. This thing that we are doing is super, super huge. Mayor, thank you. Thank you so much for being supportive.
Your will.
I can't thank you enough for being supportive of this. We have a guest speaker, and this is Lee McClellan. And Lee is with Kentucky Fish and Wildlife, and he's gonna tell you more about this, and he brought y'all some magazines.
Put my stuff up here and I'll pass out soon.
Okay, do your thing then. Do you need anything?
No.
Okay.
I've got a brain, but you know, that's...
This is the example from our magazine last call. We've got a Blue Water Trail, and I wrote on the southboard, definitely a river here. How we do it? Here, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm glad you're up, I'm happy to go.
We're here.
I didn't have one spare, alright.
Also, if anyone, I just brought some copies of our recent winter issue, just, y'all can grau, put these up here, you can grab them as you will. Also, I brought everybody one of our calendars, even though it is getting into March. It has all the hunting seasons, tips, outdoor tips, fishing tips, hunting tips, nature tips, and all that stuff.
Will you do that for me?
Pardon?
Will you hand me that?
Alright.
If you need more, this is the box over here. Alright. Laura asked me to come and speak mainly about what we're doing, I won't be too long, what we're doing about getting more access to our streams. That is the limiting factor in this whole deal. Canoeing and kayaking is exploding. It's one of the fastest-growing aspects of anything in the outdoors. A lot of people are non-consumptive users, you know, they don't fish while they're going. They just wanna paddle, they just wanna sightsee, and then get out and get some exercise, some fresh air, and just enjoy the beauty of being on a stream. A river is a unique ecosystem, it's all, it's so much different. It's real, it has a lot more life, it has a lot more vibrancy, and just being on a river is just an incredible feeling. And people are turning into that. And kayaks are, you know, they're a form. Bass boats have all gotten so outlandishly expensive that it's priced a lot of middle-class people like me out of market. And that's also forced all the used boats to get more expensive, because when the new ones get more expensive, that drives the price up of the used. So, I mean, it's just a lot of people can't do that. So a nice, you can get a really nice, top-of-the-line kayak for under $1,500, you can get a basic one for around $500 or less, and then you could be out paddling. So that appeals to a lot of people, so, and they require no maintenance, other than you need to put a little protectant on it every once in a while. And they don't burn any gas, so you burn calories instead of burning fossil fuels, which appeals to a lot of people. But one of the things we've done is, over the last year, we've launched a canoeing and kayaking page on our website, at fw.ky.gov. Any of you have there, it's all over the materials I gave to you. And what it does is it's compiling all the important stuff that you need to go have a successful outing. We have a list of where to boat in Kentucky. You can select by, you go and click on that, and you can select by type of ramp, carry down, you can select by water body, county, city, and you can select all these parameters, and you can find out all the, like, you know, go on there, La Viza Fork, bang, all the ones that we know about. And when we have new access, we're trying to outreach people like you all, to let us know, hey, this is an access. And we have a stream biologist, and that's his job, is to go around and work with counties, work with cities, and work with government entities, to say, hey, you know, I know people fish here, can we make that an official access? And we'll put it on our website that people can use. And most of, most of the time, they're very like, yes. They're very, sometimes they're standoffish, but usually they're yes, because that's money coming into the community. So it includes carry-down access, bank access, and you can select by access type, if you just wanna use carry downs for your kayak. So it comes in real handy. In that page, we also have a stream fisheries page, which is something new we're doing. We've profiled 10 streams, and we're working our way east. Kenny Connecticut is, South Fork Kentucky River's on there. And it has a wealth of information. You click on that, it has the accesses, it has the mileages between the accesses, which is vitally important. And another thing that I love, it has a picture of the access. So when you're new on a stream, there's nothing scarier than, oh, God, it's getting 7:30, I can't see, where in the world's the access? I've never been here before. Then you start getting that, have I blown by it? Oh my God, you know, that's a panic feeling, when it's getting dark, and you're not at the access, and you're starting to freak out a little bit, thinking, was I farting around looking at a bird, blew right by it, or, you know? And I've been there. I've dark floated many a times, and the worst thing in the world is dark floating. It is absolutely the worst. You can't tell how deep it is even with a flashlight. It'll look three feet deep, you step off, it's up to your neck. It's just no good. And it's hard to find accesses unless you have a really good flashlight, it'll just go right by you when it gets dark. So having a picture of what it looks like is invaluable. Also, they've profiled, and they're adding on the stream, they're adding several, every year, it's gonna grow and grow and grow. And they go and they sample the streams for populations of rock bass, smallmouth, musk lunges, whatever the predominant predator species are in that stream, you can look down and say, oh, they shot several over 17 inches, you know, some over 16. Give you frequency, and it'll give you length, and it gives you an idea of how healthy that population is, which is handy. Also, it has links to the USGS Water Flow Stream Table, which is invaluable. How many of yous this when you plan a trip?
Me.
I mean, you need, you need to put it on your favorites, if you get into canoeing and kayaking, because it instantly tells you if it's blown out, because it has an average over the years and a mean, and all, it'll give you an idea. And it has these little triangles on it. If it's way up here, the triangle's way down there, then you know to not waste your time and drive an hour, because it's gonna be blown out and chock a mill, and not, not really very paddleable, and not very fishable at all. Muddy water in a stream is the most difficult. Cold muddy water in a stream is really difficult fishing. So, may I borrow your magazine? I bet the red one must...
She was on the wrong page, Jim.
Please try to...
So, and we also have information on there about paddling safety. There's courses you can look, and you can download those to promote safe paddling. I mean, paddling's fun, but if you don't know what you're doing, and you don't know the river that well, you can get into some hairy situations sometimes. You always wanna keep your boat straight. Never ever wanna be doing like this unless you're in a pool. But if you're in moving water, you wanna keep that boat, that bow pointed downstream at all times. If you get crosswise, that's usually when you flip. Or if you're going fast and you hit something with the bow, avoid hitting stuff, because that slows down, inertia carries your boat around, and flip, over you go. So fishing kayaks now are much more stable than they were 10 years ago. And they're much safer, but still, flipping is no fun. Always, always, always wear that PFD, even if it's hot, you know, always wear it. I wear mine all the time, and I cuss it because I'm hot, and it's the summer, and it's on a stream, I know, but you never know. You know, if you get upset, and you hit your head, to give you an example, my wife and I, she's just gotten into kayaking. I bought a new kayak, now she has an old kayak, so we can go together. And it's, it's a really good way to have a couple of time, and it's fun, and we have a picnic and all. Well, we were going through a pretty mild stretch of Elkhorn Creek there, near Frankford, and I heard behind me, and I went, I turned around, I was like, how in the world did you flip in this? And a spider was hanging down.
Spider from a tree.
And she, wahhh! And just forgot for a moment, because she, I mean, she is deathly afraid of spiders. So she, she saw the spider, freaked out, and just forgot for a minute that she was on a boat, and tried to like, get out, and then over she went. We got everything back, broke a little bit of the handle off the rod, fishing rod I built her, but everything else we got back. And I always assume you're gonna flip, because I have her clip down everything under, you know, your tank well, clip everything down, put it in your front well if you're not using it, assume you're gonna flip. That way, when you do, if you do flip, you don't lose all your stuff. We didn't lose a thing, except she broke a little bit of the cork off her handle, I fixed it.
And she didn't get spider bit.
And she didn't get spider bit. She got a little cold. It was in October, but yeah, the spider, I was like, honey, you can never forget, just duck, just don't forget, you're on a boat, you're not home. When we first married, I heard a blood-curdly scream coming from the bathroom. We were living in a apartment, we didn't have two pennies row together. And now we have three pennies row. And I was like, I thought an axe murderer was in the house, you know, I was about to run in to get my pistol, and it was a spider about the size of an ant that was in the shower. So this and I got the introduction. She really hates spiders. We didn't live together until we got married, so I was kinda learning my way. She's not a fan of spiders, so for her to freak a little bit and flip, you got barf of the course. Okay. So you have all those links, and we're gonna, we're gonna keep adding to that stream fisheries page. And when we, when our biologists do sampling and stuff, they're gonna send it in, we're gonna have our stream biologists come up and check it out, and I'm sure this one will be, Tug Fork will be on there pretty soon, La Viza will be on there pretty soon. But also contained in that is the series of articles that I've written, starting in 2010, I've been doing them eight years now, I can't believe that. I'm up to 34, and that's the Blue Water Trails series. And I used to send them out over email, but, you know, as administrations change, and people change, now we're doing them in our magazine, and then I take a PDF and put that on the Blue Water Trails. So I have to have Obie, now the paddling season's getting ready to fire up, I need to have this, and it'll be on a PDF form, that you can bring up free, print it off, and enjoy it. And 34 streams, I've done one on La Viza Fork, on the Hatfield McCoy paddling trail. I did that one with Sean Cochran, I'm sure he'll be all, know Sean. He helped me on that one, and we did, we did that piece. I also did one on the Russell Fork, which, you know, I also said, bail at the garden hole in the upper part, and put in a rattlesnake hole at the bottom part. The other part, don't go. Let's hear it, world class.
Both the city government in Elkhorn City and Sean helped us to develop the interlocal agreement, to work on our trails. And Culrun Village, they sent them their information as well. So they've been great partners on this. Sean's been very helpful.
And, I mean, the breaks Interstate Park, it's one of the unknown gems of it.
It really is.
I mean, that place is phenomenal. It is so gorgeous. When you're driving up there, and the drive up, and the gorge that comes, before you even get into the park, is fabulous. I've got some on my phone, and I show people, it's like, where do you think that is? Colorado, or, you know, Wyoming? I was like, no, and it's a bike counter. It's awesome. But in the Blue Water Trails, what I try to do is, one, the main thing is, I'm designing these for worry-free paddling. Every access in here has been groundproofed, I don't write, I go out and float it. I don't sit there and write, the Canoeing and Kayaking Guide to Kentucky, great book, but he wrote that North Carolina Looking at Bridges, and he pretty much has every bridge in Arizona as an access point. And half of his accesses are wrong. So if you use that book, and you go there, you know, a lot of times, the bridge is like super high, and there's no way you can carry a boat down there, but it'll add a distance as an access point. So he didn't, I, that always made me mad. So I wanted to make sure that these are worry-free, or that you can go, and I'm always, I've got a list, this long, I've got a, now that it's fired up over the winter, I compile the changes I need to make, because accesses come, accesses go, I try to keep it as updated as possible, okay? That way, when you go to that stream fisheries page, and you see the Blue Water Trails underneath, or the canoeing and kayaking page, or whatever, you see the Blue Water Trails underneath, that's bona fide. I have groundproofed. And I wanted worry-free enjoyment of our incredible stream fisheries, that I think have been neglected and overlooked for a long time. We have tremendous resources here in Kentucky for streams. Another thing is, we have, I always include, a map that has the distances, the access points, and everything, so people can look at that map. And also, the older versions I have, have a printable map, that we have our GIS people make, based on the Department of Transportation's grid, which is the most accurate in the state. So they'll look there, that stuff up on there, and then we'll have a printable map with that. But with the PDFs, the maps kind of include. But the older ones I've done, you can print a map, and it has the same thing, it has distances, access points, and also in the narrative, the story that goes along with it. If there's a tricky part of the access, like, this road says it's blah blah, but really you need to go another quarter mile and take a left on this road to make sure that you get to here, or, you know, this road here doesn't go all the way to the stream, go up to the next one. If I know there's something that's difficult that's gonna make users confused, I try to make sure I take care of that in there. I always try to add a little history to it, and I also put fishing tips and fishing information for the species, mainly our streams are smallmouth bass streams, most of them. But if they're a musk lung stream, or large mouths are more predominant, I give fishing techniques and tips on how to catch them, because, you know, this is a paddling article, but I wanna make sure I emphasize fishing, because a lot of the paddling literature is just about paddling, it doesn't include the fishing aspect. And also try to say, if you're fishing, you know, you look at those guidebooks, this is a three-hour paddle. Well, if you're fishing, that's a six-hour paddle, okay? So anytime you know you're gonna fish, double the time whatever the guidebook says. If it says it's a four-hour straight paddle, then play on all day. So, and I include that in the narrative.
Do you put nine-hour paddles for people like me that tie off and nap?
Oh, yeah, sure. Just don't want to dark float, that's nice.
Don't dark float.
But I mean, I go over all the time, I look at beach and get out and wait, you know, and then have a sandwich, and then, you know, and look, and I might spend an hour on one spot if it's good fishing. So that can really add up to the time. Also, the maps denote power lines, low-head dams, and anything you may have to, you may have to portage, which you need to know. And power lines are great, because they give you an idea, oh, here's the power line, okay, we still have about two miles left according to this map after we cross into this power line. They're great for keeping track of your time. That is a big challenge, and I'll still do it, I know better. But you'll get to the foot, and you're so excited to be there, and you'll, you'll peddle and fish and everything for the first mile and a half, and then you realize, I've got six more miles to go, and it's 2:00 in the afternoon, you know? So it's really hard to maintain discipline on keeping your boat moving, which is, everybody's bad about it, because you're excited to be there. But having those in the maps and stuff kinda heat, helps you, goats you, and keeps you moving. And alleviates fear when you're like, ah, we've been going a long time, I haven't seen it, oh, there's the power line, oh, good, now I can relax, I know I've got another mile and a half, or whatever. Because that's a scary feeling when you're on a stream for the first time, and since these are gonna be all new accesses and trails, people are gonna need to know landmarks and stuff, so they don't freak out. Because nothing scarier than if time is getting away, and you don't have any idea how far it is to the takeout. That is, that can induce panic, you know? That's a barrier sometimes of paddling. People go that, then they dark float, and they hated it, and they sometimes don't come back. So it's very important to make sure everybody knows the distances and the landmarks that you can gauge your trip accordingly, especially we fishermen. Because if you're on them in a good hole, you'll stay two hours, and then 7:00, you're still got a quarter of the way to go home, and you're panicked. So I'm gonna do one on the Tug Fork for the summer issue of our magazine, and it will be on the Blue Water Trails page, according. And this is our basic layout too, here's our map, we always have nice, pretty pictures. That was a nice smallmouth, I wish Obie had, I had other pictures of him holding that big smallmouth there, it looks like a minnow, but you see, it's, man, it's probably about 16, but it doesn't look that way. But it's a pretty picture, he looks more aesthetically, I look, I want big fish, you know, I want people to get excited. He wants pretty pictures, have good composition, I want big fish. So we're always going back and forth. That's the end of the Narrows of the South Fork. And that is one of the best smallmouth streams, this South Fork Kentucky River. We've been in it on Nida, and we took out at Rocky Branch. Easy shuttle, gorgeous, I mean gorgeous. And we saw a couple of people. This drop here is a little bit hairy, you need to shoot it in the middle. We all, we portaged on the right, because we didn't know it, and the guy went right by us right down the middle. I was like, well, we look like fools. Oh, yeah, I mean, he went right, and he didn't have a really whitewater boat, straight down the middle, we were all over there pulling and grunting and cussing, and he went right down the middle. So I prefer to paddle over portage, but sometimes if you don't know, this is Danny Barrett, anybody know Danny Barrett? He was the upper Kentucky River manager for the US Army Corps Engineers, he retired about seven years ago. The son Scott is the one holding that fish.
I'm sure David knows him.
He's a, he's a good guy.
I'm sure he knows him.
And the last thing that we're doing, is we've, I'm on the paddling access working group. Now Paul Wilks is overseeing this, because he has the federal money. We're trying to partner with county governments and city governments to, and we've got a model schematic plan, we already have the... Because if you're on them in a good hole, you'll stay two hours. And then, seven o'clock, you're, you're, you've still got a quarter of the way to go home, and you're panicked. So I'm gonna do one on the tug fork for the summer issue of our magazine. And it will be on the Blue Water Trails page according. And this is our basic layout too. Here's our map, we always have nice, pretty pictures. That was a nice smallmouth, I wish Obie had, I had other pictures of him holding that big smallmouth there. It looks like a minnow, but you see, it's, man, it's probably about sixteen, but it doesn't look that way. But it's a pretty picture, he's, he looks more aesthetically, I look, I want big fish. You know, I want people to get excited. He wants pretty pictures, have good composition, I want big fish. So we're always going back and forth. That's the end of the narrows of the South Fork. And that is one of the best smallmouth streams, this South Fork, Kentucky. We've been in it on Nida, and we took out Rocky Branch. Easy shuttle, gorgeous. I mean gorgeous. And we saw a couple of people. This, this drop here is a little bit hairy, you need to shoot it in the middle. We all, we portaged on the right because we didn't know it, and the guy went right by us right down the middle. I was like, well, we look like fools. Oh, yeah, I mean, he went right, and he, he didn't have a really whitewater boat. Straight down the middle, we were all over there pulling and grunting and cussing, and he went right down the middle. So I prefer to paddle over portage. But sometimes if you don't know, this is Danny Barrett, anybody know Danny Barrett? He was the Upper Kentucky River Manager for the US Army Corps of Engineers, he retired about seven years ago. The son Scott is the one holding that fish.
I'm sure Danny knows him.
He's, he's a, he's a good guy. And the last thing that we're doing is we've, I'm on the paddling access working group. Now Paul Wilks is overseeing this because he has the federal money. We're trying to partner with county governments and city governments to, and we've got a model schematic plan, we already have the costs, and it, they're gravel, they're, you know, a gravel parking area and a gravel carry down. They're not boat ramps, they're carry downs, which are much cheaper, boat ramps are expensive.
And hairy.
And, and, and what?
And hairy to get.
Yeah, they are. You know, and we've got a list this long of people, I mean, we have constant requests. And they all, after a flood, they all need maintenance too, because the end will wash out and the toe breaks off, then you gotta go put a new slab in. Boat, boat ramps, keeping them are a pain in the butt, but, you know, people love them because they work. But these will be more where we'll have some signage, we'll have parking, we'll have a gravel carry down that's easy, and we'll have it marked on our webpage. We've, we've had a little bit of an issue with, when administrations turn over, then the next county judge executive or whatnot, mayor comes, and then is not on board. That fell through, there was one in, I think Pike County, that we were working on that fell through that way. That's back on the burner. So we want to do like five in the next year or two to, to show as a model to other governments, this is what we can do. And if you can match us with funding, we can come up with this, if you can come up with that, we can meet in the middle, and increase our stream access, which is vitally important. And we're trying to eliminate those pseudo, what I call pseudo-public accesses. Places that people have fished for a long time, but aren't technically public, but the landowner doesn't care. Those I feel uncomfortable publishing. Because if you increase the volume greatly, the landowner might start caring, might start getting mad. So I mean, there's, South Fork a licking is terrible about that. The accesses are crude, and they're quasi-public. So we want, and that's why we're working with county officials to say, hey, this is where we, is this an access that we can list as public, that people can use on our website? And if they say no, we don't put it on it. Or they say, well, it's in, then we don't put it on it. We want bona fide ones that are recognized by government officials. Yes, this is a public access spot, you can put this out for the public to consume. Because I don't want, I hate those quasi-public. Oh, I've, I've fished down at Henry's place forever, he doesn't care. Well, that's fine, but you can't publish that public. You know, because Henry might get mad and just run everybody off, you know? So we want to make sure that we have worry-free access. That's what the paddling access group is doing. Is we're trying to get more access that's sanctioned, that's usable, that you don't have to worry about angering landowners when you're using it. And the last thing is, the stream laws in Kentucky are really, really weird. In other states, it's usually to the high water mark, it's public. No one owns the water. As long as you're in your boat, a landowner can't say a thing because you're sitting upon water, which is the public domain. However, when you step out to wade, there's a good chance that you are trespassing. Most ninety-nine percent of the time, you're not gonna have any problem. One percent of the time, you might. Now, a judge in Frankfurt, over a case involving Elkhorn Creek, decided that wading is an essential activity on the stream, and the public can wade wherever they want on Elkhorn Creek. Because he deemed that an essential activity of the stream. I would love to see that take off as precedent for the rest of the state. That way you don't have issues. So water, you're cool, feet on the bottom. Some of the old deeds don't demarcate the bottom as being owned. Some just say to the waterline here of such and such creek, and the bottom's kind of in the public domain. Others, you have to go to the port house and pull the, pull the plaque. Others, you know, the, the property line runs right down the middle or over on this side, so, you know, the older deeds tend to be more just using the stream bank. The newer deeds usually are, the stream is included. So when people ask me, oh, that's one of the biggest questions I get, what's the stream on? Well, that's the stream on. And it's complicated. So if it's an older deed and they don't care, then you're okay. But if it's a newer deed and they've demarcated it, then you're not. But most time, you're fine if you wade, and if you show respect. Now, another thing is, most bridge abutments and around are a public easel that you can use as egress. That's why you have those little right-of-way. You've seen the little concrete things near bridges that, that mark the right-of-way? The right-of-way is the public domain. So most of those, you're, you're cool to access there. If it's feasible. A lot of bridges, this is not feasible, but, that's another one I get a lot of questions about. Can I use a bridge as an access? A lot of times you can. But then again, this depends on, if it crosses just a little bit of private property, that landowner would say, get out. Most of the time, that won't happen, but there's potential for it, too. And I've had it on South Elkhorn there in Midway. I've had a farmer come out, he owns a bed and breakfast there with a, over and under broken over his forearm there in the crux of his... I don't allow fishing, I don't allow them. Sir, sorry. He said, down, downstream, that bridge on up here, you can't come up here. Not here to cause trouble, have a good day. But that's the only time that's happened. And I, you know, I've written thirty-four articles on street fishing, I've nosed around everywhere and snuck and looked. That's the only bad encounter I've had since college. I had a few in Silver Creek because people were out there partying, the landowner get mad, they like fired, they shoot guns, they get drunk. He didn't like that. So, and I can understand it. But since that time, that's the only time I've had a veiled threat issued to me about access. So, and I float probably as much as anybody in the state of Kentucky. I'm bragging, I'm just saying, I do it for my job, and I do it for my reputation, because I love it, it's funny. So that, that is the laws regarding that. And they're, they're kind of gray and fluid. I would love to see legislation down the road that nails that down one. Because as the, as the paddle sports grow, there's potential for more conflicts along those lines. So that's why in the Blue Water Trails, I emphasize these are bona fide, bulletproof access spots that you don't have to worry at all about Farmer Joe coming down with a shotgun in the crux of his, of his fore. Any questions?
What's our stream health here locally on the Levisa?
Improving, improving with each passing year. Most streams, and Kevin Frywell knows more about this than I do. But what I've, what I've seen in East Kentucky streams, the further you get away from the impacts from coal, which, you know, I mean, it has impact. But as you get decades past, these streams are healing. Especially the Levisa Fork above the lake, you should see the smallmouth they shocked up there. I mean, I meant to, I should have brought, put them on my phone.
They're tremendous.
Because they sent those men, it's like, where are the world's ends? It's like, the Levisa Fork above Fishtrap Lake. I mean, twenty-one, twenty-two inch smallmouth, fat, and they go up there in the spring. So if you want to catch some smallmouths where the stream is still flowing, but it's almost in the lake, those mile above the stream, here in April, get out there and hit that. Because there are some fat hogs in there. And that whole part, all the way up. And near Mouth Card? Near Mouth Card, even though there was that little spill a couple of years ago, it didn't... Kevin Fry said that is one of the hottest smallmouth spots to fish as well, in that section. So, but you could put your boat in, Fishtrap in the upper part, and boat up and beach and get out and wade, or you could put your kayak in and paddle up. But it's, it's, it's the first mile or two above the lake in the spring where this, I mean, biggest smallmouths, I've seen them shock up. That Green River below the dam is the only other one that compares to. Those are the, and South Fork, Kentucky has some nice fishing too, because it's just got so much habitat. And it has really good water quality. It has some siltation issues, but there's really no coal mining in the drainage. And the logging has been gone for a long time. So the, the fish populations there are really, really improved. The Levisa Fork, all of them are doing better and better. Each year goes by, the better they get. And the smallmouth populations are starting to chchchchchch. Musky, everything, and some of the streams are whole musky, they're, they're improving rapidly. So what you, what you have, that, that the acid mine drainage and stuff shut off and it's gone, mother nature heals herself incredibly quick. Consider, what, you know, a lot of these streams are, the New River in, that flows into the big South Fork, Governor McBrury Gound, it flows out of Tennessee, it's still ninety-five percent biologically dead. From, it has so much acidity coming into it from both mines. And, but in areas where that, the mining has ceased, and there's no leakage, it's amazing how quickly, the, the benthic life, the microinvertebrates, the base of the food chain is what you gotta have strong. And if you have a lot of siltation, or you have acidic water, they get wiped out, then your fish population's cracked. So as long as you have a good environment for that to happen, then you're gonna have big fat smallmouths. Because good, good microinvertebrates, good crayfish, good sculpins, good everything, make for big fat smallmouths. So, which I would be a fan of. But I'm telling you, get above Fishtrap, you're in spring, where it starts, where it's flowing again, and you will smack. The pictures I saw just make you dance, Bill. I mean, two of them like that, like, either one of them will make my ear. Either one of those fish that you're holding would make my ear. You know, anything above eighteen inches in a stream is a fantastic smallmouth.
And it's very, very telling of the health of the stream.
It is. And when you get to that nineteen and twenty-inch range, those are once a decade fish, or maybe once in a lifetime a fishing fish. And I saw those in, in the upper part of Fishtrap. Fishtrap's doing good, that, that lake is, has good health, good fish populations.
We're very blessed here with Paintsville Lake as well, and we like...
I love Paintsville. My brother-in-law used to live in Paintsville. And we used to go up to Paintsville Lake. I caught so many spotted bass out there, it was a little black worm. And he was in a runabout, really, when fishing boat, but they'd be swimming, I'd be... And I caught a million fourteen-inch spots out there. We tried to get the smallmouth restarted again, but just the way the lake has aged, it just didn't do. We lost the smallmouths, just didn't do. And also, what's, I've written about it. What hurt too is where the core was drawing the water. They were basically pulling the smallmouth habitat out of the lake. So we tried to get them to change that a little bit, and, and we've had very mixed results. We stopped a bunch of them in their Del Halla string. I went down and documented them shocking the fish up that took to the hatchery. They spawned them off, and then put them back into Del Halla, and then took their fry and put them in Paintsville Lake. So the, the ones that are in there are Del Halla string, so. But it's just, and it, it's helped the cores change the depths from which they release because that cool oxygenated water, smallmouths have to have. It's also impacted the walleye as well. You know, the walleye are not as good as they were fifteen years ago. But also, the lake is aging and getting more fertile, which is more benefits to spotted bass and the largemouths to the, to the herd of smallmouths and walleye. To the detriment of search and bear work. So, any other questions? I, I plan to keep writing this until we run out of good places to, to write about.
Well, you're gonna be writing a long time.
Mm-hmm. I'd like to get, really, we'd like to get to forty-five maybe, maybe fifty if we can do it, you know? And eventually, what, we have it free on the website, but we'd like to put it in some kind of waterproof book so people could take it with them and fold it out. I've got, I've got several books that are designed to fold out into a plastic bag, and you take it in your boat with you, and they're like, oh, okay. There's one that inspired me to this, called the Buffalo River Handbook, Buffalo River, Arkansas, it's incredible. I mean, he describes every single bluff, and I mean, he has it, everything. I mean, this guy's, you know, he was instrumental in getting the park formed and everything, and he, he knows, I mean, every rock along that river. But it's great, it's designed to be folded out in a plastic bag, you're like, okay, oh, sudden, there's six of them bluff. All right, okay, he describes this, all right, we're here. Then you can relax. You know, once you run it a couple of times, then you're fine. But that first time on the stream is apprehensive time. Because you just don't know how long it's gonna take you to get to them. And there's a lot of times where I've been so worried about, I didn't fish much, I was paranoid, and then I'm like, oh, man, these three o'clock are here already! Crap! I overdid it! So that's no fun either. So you want to get the most benefit out of it as you can. And knowing where you're at really helps, because it takes that anxiety away. At least the first couple of trips, and once you do it, you'll, you'll know about a bank. Because you have side post, you're not, oh, last time we were here, it was four o'clock, and we got in at six-thirty. Okay, we got two and a half more hours in the straight down. Any other questions?
Just by virtue of the Blue Water Trail and your, and your staying so busy writing and designating and forming, it speaks to the popularity. What is your opinion of the economic impact that it has for the communities that are, are seeking to do this?
Um, you know, I wish I knew more, but I can't see where it hurts. I know, like, the Green River Paddle Trail in Greensburg, you may want to study that, that, that's shocked through the roof. They've, even the city's built cabins that they make money with. They rent them out, there's a boat ramp down at the bottom, you float right to the boat ramp, drive down, put your boat on, drive up the hill, stay in the cabin. And they're reasonable, and they're nice. I've stayed in them, they're like seventy-five dollars a night, you split that three ways, that's not much. And, you know, the, they have a stove and a microwave and a shower and, you know, and a grill out front, and plenty of parking for boats. Fantastic, so a lot of people are doing that. And there's several options you have. You can do a little short one from a, that's two and a half miles from a park, you float back home. You can go just a little bit further up and double that to about four miles. Or you can go up to what a place called Thunder Road or, or, it's Rocheville Ford, but we call it Thunder Road because that's the access. And then that's an all-dayer, you need to put in a daybreak and plan to take out in dark. But there's a bridge right beside the things, and once you go into the bridge, the ramp is right there. So people use it, I mean, that has exploded in popularity. So for Greensburg, it's been a wonderful thing. Their city has invested in places for paddlers to stay. I know on the Rock Castle River I did a Blue Water Trail, they, the county judge executive called the commissioner saying, we've seen an increase, we'd like to be designated, and it's, that's one of the first ones I wrote. So, and if you go to Frankfurt, Canoe Kentucky now has two shops. They do river tours on the Kentucky River, they rent kayaks and canoes for you to float the main stem of the creek. And, and on the weekends, it's almost love too much. I go now when it's cold. Because during the summer, I take a day off or take a half-day off, because on Saturday and Sunday, it's just a suit. And a lot of them are from Cincinnati, and they get, can be kind of irritating. I had one, we had waited a mile one time, we were catching smallmouths, and this group of canoes comes and just parks right there in front of us. We're standing with our fishing rods, it's like, you've got ten holes that way, and ten holes that way where there's no one, why are you parking while we're fishing? Like, we weren't there, we were some man.
City folk.
Yeah, they were. They get out, and then they're drinking their wine, and a little cheese and wine, all that. I was like, are we invisible? We, I mean, we said it real loud, like, damn, I didn't know I was invisible, you know? We were mad! It's like, couldn't you have went a hundred more yards down? There's a perfectly good hole right there for you to beach and drink your wine and eat cheese. But no, not right on top of where, and we were smacking them too. Soon as that happened, the fish went down, we just walked home cussing. So you have some of that.
We've had a council come out and visit us, and he brought us a...
Well, his son-in-law Nathan definitely probably is a real good buddy of mine. And if you want to buy a boat, you know, I mean, there's a lot of places around here to get a canoe. But I know a lot of people from South Fork, Kentucky, and I've talked to, they bought their boats at Canoe Kentucky. Because he carries top, top of the line, but he also has a lot of used and demo boats that he'll let go half-off this time of year. But the wonderful thing is, he'll, he'll bring three or four out right behind his shop, you get in and paddle. If you're gonna spend money on a boat, drive it. You wouldn't go to a car lot and just point a truck, I'll buy that one without getting in it and driving it around. So a lot of people buy canoe and a kayak doing the same thing, but you can go to Nathan's shop, get in, and he'll, he'll let you spend a half-hour in each boat, paddle it, see how it feels. I would have bought the wrong boat without demo. So thank God, my first big boat that I'd saved and saved, I got to test drive it, and I was like, wow, this one, I don't like this one, I love this one. And it was a great decision, that boat is, that's what my wife mainly paddles in, and that's my roughwater boat, it can handle. Really big standing waves, I mean, I've had waves break, and I'm just, it's really stable in roughwater. That's what I like, I don't want to flip. I mean, I spent a lot of time, I build a lot of my own fishing rods, I hate to leave them on the bottom of the stream, because I've flipped. But that's a great place if you want to, you're willing to make an investment in a good boat, and you want to test drive it. It's worth the drive to Frankfurt to go out there and do it. And then, take a float, you get lifetime shuttle too, when you buy a boat. So my wife and I do that all the time, they shuttle.
You can't beat that.
Free, I give them a ten dollar deal. Ten bucks, I'll pay that. And then you float right back to the shop, get your cargo, it's great. Any other questions? As you can see, I don't mind talking much.
We like it, we like it, I mean, we're, we're information junkies, so we're all about that. Anyone else have any questions for Lee?
So I look forward to, in the future, we're gonna do tug fork this summer. Levisa Fork will be the next up on the Rota. It usually takes me, I ride them one year, I do all the groundwork and stuff, then we do the pictures. Then I write it, sometimes it may be the next year before that one comes out, if we need an immediate, because we like them to match the seasons. You don't want to do a summer one, and, and there's no leaves on the trees, and it's all in this wintertime, you know, it doesn't sink the crew. So we want them to match, so if it's spring, we like it to look like spring, and summer, we like it to look like summer. We're gonna push the tug fork a little bit, we're gonna do the floats in late spring so we can get it published. But we'll have some greenery that'll look nice and won't look winter-dead. So, Levisa will be, that'll be, and also, last thing, I like to, only profile, I know, we'll mention all the sections, but we like to do two or three really good floats that have good fishing and good access. So we may leave off a chunk of this and leave off a chunk of that. But I'll say there's other options available, blah, blah, blah. And I don't like to go much over... And I don't like to go much over ten miles between access points. I've done them where there's ten or twelve, fifteen miles, like at Licking River, and they say they do those in half a day. And ten miles, that is a lot of water, if you're doing any fishing, or you're taking any time. Pretty much, you need to paddle the entire time to cover ten miles a day. Sometimes you go up to twelve is my cutoff. Now, they say up there, that's a fifteen-mile float, I measure it, it's more like eleven. But they start early in the morning, and they get in at dark, and they don't stop. So, I like to have four to eight, nine-mile stretches where there's good access. So, don't be offended if part of it's left off, because we want them where there's a concentration of good access points, and pool riffle type water. I mean, I do some flatwater, blue water trails, but people like flowing water.
They do. It's a lot of fun.
Yes, but much more fun. Kentucky River's fine, but if somebody blows by you in a two-hundred-horse bass boat, throws you a weight that big, and you're holding on for dear life. So, much prefer pool riffle, the sound of flowing water. That's... And that's where smallmouth are. So, that's my personal piece. Any other questions?
Anybody?
So, please get on our website, fw.ky.gov, go under Boat, and then check out the canoe and kayak page. We're constantly adding to it and making it better. And you can get all these, print off the mats, tons of free information that'll put butts in kayaks. And without fear of, oh, this is a quasi-public spot, anything that could screw you up, I'm gonna include it in the narrative, okay? And also the fishing. All right? I've enjoyed talking to you all.
We've enjoyed having you. Thank you so much. I'm gonna add, and I was gonna ask, when your commissioner came over to Friends of the Tug meeting, just for you ladies, if you all haven't gotten your fishing licenses yet, and your hunting license, get out there and do that. The fastest-growing demographic of the fisher people and hunters are women. And reason being is, it's a lot of fun.
My wife's like, she was scared to death. I mean, she just... We did canoeing a little bit, but after last summer, I took her, I was like, all right, I'm getting my new boat, this is your boat now. I bought her a nice paddle, too. Don't skimp on the paddle.
No.
One last thing, don't get a cheap paddle, get a good one. Get a... Carlisle's a good brand, but I love Werner, and I love bending branches, but they're expensive. But, you know, you wouldn't put a five-horse on a big bass boat. So, if you buy a cheap paddle that's just plastic and heavy, you're putting a five-horse motor on a branded bass boat, because your paddle's your engine.
We bought a Werner.
If you're gonna spend more money, don't skimp on the paddle, get a good paddle.
Good one.
The Werner paddle was wonderful.
It is. It's a very good paddle, and don't worry, it doesn't wear you out.
No, because it's like made out of carbon fiber. I got one for Stacy, and she loves it. But she was scared the first time. She went around a ramp, she was like, ooh! And she was all nervous. Then I said, follow me, and we went to the left, and we went through a really good drop where she got water in her face, and it got fast, and she came out there, and she went, whee! And after that, she was bullflying and sacred. I didn't hear another word, I'm scared, I'm this, I'm that.
Yell her, man.
After a while, she started pulling out in front of me. I'm going first! I was like, you go ahead, but just make sure you go left, because I know which are the good lines that won't get you upset.
And once you do it, you're hooked.
And even after flipping in cold water in October and getting cold, I thought, well, her paddling career is over. She just... I just told her not to freak out about spotting. She's already talking about, when are we going to paddle? When are we gonna take the kayaks?
Oh, yeah.
Couple of weeks, we'll be at it again.
And there's some great groups that you can get involved in. Want to tell us real quick about your group?
Every place we've paid, we put the pictures on, we ride mostly Russell Ford from LaVisa, Russell Ford from Elkhorn downstream. Now, in October, when they have that release up there, that's not us.
No doubt.
We had figured out if we can put in down there at Elkhorn Creek, or at the East End Bridge, and wait on that water to come and pick us up, and there's some pretty breathtaking stuff out down below there. And you get out there at the BBT Bank, it felt true. That's not an honest thing either.
Beautiful, eh? Beautiful country there.
If you go up there, maybe go up there and watch them in the breaks, run through the breaks in that whitewater, you wanna try something, that water hits in town about one-thirty, two o'clock.
Has anybody been to the breaks and watched that up there? Watched the whitewater run? If you want something exhilarating, that's just a short drive from home, go watch that. It brings people from, I think...
All over the world.
Last year, they had sixteen or eighteen countries represented there.
What is it in October?
October, um...
Every weekend in October.
Every weekend, right.
No, I think it's the first three weekends is my... First three weekends, Fridays, they have a release Saturday or something.
But there's tons of places that you can get there along the rocks and along... And watch it go down. I wouldn't recommend getting in that water unless you're like those people and you're an expert at it, because it is, woo, it's very, very swift.
You can ride that in the summer, they tube that in the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's also, it's really fun in the spring, summer.
Oh, yeah. I have tubes on it. Now, tubing is fun.
Yeah, it's waist-deep probably for the most part in the summer, so it's still a lot of fun.
It's just a beautiful place, and a lot of fun to go watch.
It's breathtaking.
And...
Smallmouths and that are getting better and better, too.
Well, everybody here is Russell Ford, and they're kind of afraid of it, but you put in there around Elkhorn, it's...
Yeah, it's fanciful from there now.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, you have to watch, you know, and sometimes, sometimes it's not enough water.
Not enough, yeah. We ran into that last summer in a couple of our places where we run, there was really not enough, you know, there was too much having to jimmy around.
Really, that river tells you so much. From Elkhorn to different stretches, you get to Allen, and you think, you're on a lake that's so big.
It is, it's huge. And I encourage you all to think about doing... Getting out and doing the paddle sports, because you do not have to be an athlete. You don't have to be, you know, a hundred pounds and train ten times a week to enjoy paddle sports. Almost anybody can enjoy paddle sports, including, we have a couple of folks that are affiliated with our Trail Town team there, that have some physical handicaps, that we're trying to work out ways that they can get in and enjoy as well. And our lake staff out there is, they're getting ready to put in a kayak launch facility, an aid, so that even folks with handicaps or disabilities can get in and out of the canoe with a little bit of ease. And if you come to our events, that Trail Town is sponsoring, we always have groups of youth that are in our volunteer committee, and this is Catherine Castle, and she's our volunteer committee head. And we have a plethora of young people that come out, and that's what they come out for, they come out to assist people in and out of kayaks, to help them, you know, get stable, and we always have groups of people, so I encourage you to come and do that, because I think now for the, I want to say fifteenth year running, non-motorized watercraft far outnumber motorized watercraft. Because folks can't afford... Kayaking is the everyday guy's sport.
I mean, I've always been into it, but, you know, I wanted a boat for years, but I just wanted...
Confort it.
Well, I mean, and I don't, you know, the way my property is, I can't store it in my house, I'd have to have it stored, that's at least a thousand dollars a year there for just, you know? And you think about how many times you actually use it, unless you're super hardcore in your tournament angle.
Clean it, you clean, clean it before you take it out, take it out, and then go home and clean it again.
Yeah, all, I mean, with a kayak...
We've got thirteen boats in our boat house.
Do I?
We've got thirteen boats in our boat house.
Ain't one of them got a motor in it?
There you go, man! That's what I'm talking about. Um, thank you, Lee, I appreciate you so much. I appreciate your departments being so progressive thinking, because realizing that when you encourage the sport, you encourage the sportsmanship. You get people out there. The first fish I ever caught from a kayak, man, I've been a fisherman all my life, but to catch one from a kayak and pull it in there, and, oh, it was exciting.
Extremely exciting.
It was very exciting. I was thinking, what am I gonna do with this now? But I encourage you all to get out and enjoy that.
Those little fish grabbers, I've got some from Bass Pro that look like a pistol that float. Best thing in the world for a kayak, because they'll be flopping around, you just pull it up, you never even touch it. Beep, you've got it. And Rapala makes some, too, they're like pliers, but I like the ones that pinch like this better. You just pull it, and beep, you lift up, you pop that hook, lift it over, pull the trigger, you never touch it.
Yeah, my husband got a Rapala, and it's very easy.
It's sexy, yeah.
And it was affordable, it was really exciting.
They float, get one to float to.
Yeah, or you'll lose it, shores work. Um, so, thank you, Lee, I appreciate you so much. So, that's what we're working on, on this trail system, Trail Town, and I wanted to mention, because it's very, very important, something he touched on about private property. The Kentucky Mountain Regional Recreation Authority, the reason that was developed is so that we could work on trails of all kinds that cross county lines, that cross private property, that cross public domain, and that authority, and we're now twenty-two counties strong, with twenty-two local governments supporting that authority, and the state supporting it through the Department of Local Government. That authority is going to offer private landowners a little bit of relief from the stress of worrying about insurance and liabilities and things like that, because the authority is going to carry some of that burden. And once you get people, private landowners, once you give them that peace of mind that we're gonna help you manage this, and you can open your property up and allow people to enjoy it as a trail, then you get a lot more people that are willing to do it. Previously, when there was a lot of liability and stigma attached with that, folks weren't so... Weren't so game to do that, you know? They were like, I don't know about all that, I don't know about four-wheelers, I don't know about people up on my property, because of the liability. So, hopefully, with the authority and with that taking hold, every county in our region is in the authority. So, and I'm very blessed that our judge executive has allowed myself and Trail Town as a team to participate in that authority, so that we can stay on the edge of what's happening with it, and I think that's gonna increase the... Decrease the problems with private property. I think that's gonna significantly decrease the problems with that and open more places up to everybody. One of the issues, another of the issues that we deal with here in eastern Kentucky, and if you do, if you're like my husband and I, and you do any traveling at all, you'll know that this is the truth, we have an issue with garbage. Garbage is like a huge thing here, not so much anywhere else. You can travel just a couple of hours away from here, and trash is not an issue. It's a... Some of it is an economic thing, it's because of folks not having the ability economically to afford to dispose of their waters in a proper way. Some of it is just the vastness of these haulers and the terrain, and how garbage piles up and enters into the waterways and the trails and things like that, but it's an issue. And there are a lot of folks that work very diligently trying to put together groups to collect garbage, and Trail Town's no exception. We have a cleanup coming up, tidy the trail, tidy the trail, I'm telling you that, tidy the trail! April the fourteenth, come out and help us pick up garbage. We picked up twenty-three hundred pounds last year, and that is not from people using the trail and dropping garbage, that is garbage that makes its way from the roadways, from being thrown out the windows, and we all need to be thinking the big picture on that, how can we fix this? What can we do? What can we... How can we change this mindset where people toss this garbage?
It gets bad on Elkhorn Creek in the summer.
It's horrible, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
And Elkhorn and Frankford?
Yeah.
All of them. Shh. You know, I pick up, I bring a bag with me about every time I pick up, it's easy, I can fill it up the first...
So, it's a huge issue, and leading right into that, there are a lot of people that are trying to figure out ways to address that issue. And one of those people is our next speaker, and this is Ms. Chris Marney. And Chris is President CEO of a company called NanoStar, and she's gonna tell you about one of the ideas they have for addressing garbage. So, your sister?
And while I pick, I guess everybody's set up. I'm just gonna give you a little bit of history of how my company got started. In 2014, I had what is known as catastrophic life events, okay? And that's when you have things happen outside of the car that are catastrophic. And so, what happened with me was, my job ended in February. In March, I was in the hospital with renal failure with both kidneys blocked off by kidney stones, and I was hours from death. And Dr. told me, he said, if you happen to come, Chris, he said, when you did, he said, ah, we won't be having this conversation, you'd be sick, and we'd be flying, yeah, I'd be touch and go where you lived to die. So, I went through two additional surgeries, after the first surgery to save my life, and unblocked the kidneys, and went almost a year without working, and at the end of 2014, I said, Lord, I am not going through another year like this again, so you tell me what I need to do. And he did. And he started talking to me about a business. A few months later, my pastor came to me, he said, Chris, we gotta do something to keep jobs in eastern Kentucky. He said, our people are leaving in droves, we've gotta do something. So, what are we gonna do? So, we sat down with Brian, who is our IT guy. We started putting all this together, and that formed our company, NanoStar Incorporated. Now, NanoStar's an unusual name, but not really, because the Lord kept talking to me about despise not the day of small beginnings. Nano-smile, start beginning, Nano-Star. My computer shut down.
Yeah.
I was kidding around today, because I'd had such trouble with Keynote, and, well, actually not Keynote, my computer, every time I tried to translate into PowerPoint, then it would lose some of the animations and stuff from Keynote, so I was laughing back, I said, this is not good for a tech-driven research and development company. That whole technology... Okay. All right, go to the... This is, I'll introduce myself, I'm Chris Marney, I'm the CEO and co-owner of NanoStar Incorporated. That's Brian Boyd, he's our information technology specialist. I'm sitting here in the front row. Here's Darwin Belcher. He's our Vice President. He's going to take over in a little bit. I'm going to run through a little bit, and he's going to take over. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the future, and it is now. Who are we? We are NanoStar Incorporated, a tech-driven research and development company. We have over 30 products in various stages of development, from concept to prototyping to finish. What we do is we provide solutions. What we have done and are continuing to do is looking for problems, identify a problem, and then we take it to our think tank and to our engineers and to various people, and we come up with a solution. This is what we do. We provide innovative products for solving some of the critical problems facing our world, city, region, state, nation, and to the nations. We are a growing company. And this is how we do it. We take the two-step method, assesses the problem, then use this new and existing technology to provide a solution. We put them together in non-traditional ways, which you'll see in just a moment. From that, we have a product that solves the problem. Okay, one of our first products. Here is the problem. We have the spread of infectious diseases, HIV, hepatitis B and C, drug use, use of that, shared needles, and healthcare workers that get accidentally stuck, things like that. We thought about it, and we said, "How can we solve this problem?" NIPS. Needle Internal Processing System, proprietary system. It's small, it's portable, it takes care of the problem. Use a proprietary system that shares the needle out at the point it goes into the syringe. It reseals the syringe so it cannot be used with another needle. It takes the needle, recycles it. And if you'll notice, as I go through this, our products are very eco-friendly. They use recycling to help us in solving the problem. We've actually done some preliminary test marketing on this product, and it has been very favorably received. Doctors' offices, hospitals, you take it, you take it with you. Everybody knows the people that go around and take your blood when you're in the hospital. You take it with you, they can take it with them. When they're finished, right in it, it's done. It can't be reused, it can't stick, they can't get into it. It's a very safe system. And we have actually thought of and are going to, when all this is ready, we're going to donate some of these to the Doctors Without Borders. So they'd be able to use them for them. Of course, what we want to do is not only create jobs, retain skilled workers, make self-sustaining communities, but we want to bless people. Bless regions, cities, nation. All right, everyone knows there's always a need for clean drinking water. 700 million people worldwide drink contaminated water. What would you do if I told you we have a product that provides clean drinking water without the need for harsh chemical additives? No sandstone, no limestone, no charcoal. But it cleans the water of all organic and inorganic materials. And preliminary testing show that we'll clean it even antirax. Now think about this, it's something that ever got into our water system from a terrorist attack. And we call it NanoPure.
God, don't worry about it here.
No, I'm slowing.
You put too many stocks in there.
Okay. This is what NanoPure does. NanoPure in air, it purifies the contaminated water, just like I said, all inorganic or organic materials. Okay, now think about that. And I'm going to show you, you won't believe, because we use city water to do some initial testing. And I'm going to show you in a minute what's in your city water. This is our concept testing, proving the process works. This is what's in your city water. See how it separated water, H-God, from the organics, inorganic from the water? Okay? That is pure, pure, pure water. And those are the things that they add to it to purify it. The advantages of NanoPure? Does not require any chemicals. It's scalable, we can use it at home, or we can use it in a large municipal plant. You'll notice a lot of things, we go along, our products are scalable. They can either be for home use, or we can use them at large city scale. So they work almost anywhere. It's a lower energy requirement to operate. You also notice a lot of our stuff involves citing energy. Removes organic, inorganic materials. Cost-effective and very eco-friendly. Everybody likes those words. Okay. All right, 1.3 billion tons of garbage, billions, is produced throughout the world every year. In the US lawn, we produce 230 million tons of trash every year for an average of five pounds per person every day. Yes, we have a garbage problem. Now, I want you to imagine a couple of things. Imagine that you are standing in a suburban street that used to be a landfill. Or that you're at a disaster site where the infrastructure has been destroyed, yet you had electricity, hot water, where you can take a shower, wash clothes, and you also have electricity, wash your clothes, take a hot shower. But the infrastructure is gone. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, introducing. And this is where Darwin's going to take over in just a second and talk to you about this product that we are all excited about. The Phoenix 21. A refuse-derived fuel system.
I don't do all that stuff.
I'm a fourth.
Don't worry about me. Don't worry about me nodding my head at you, Brian. All right, so here's the thing. Go ahead and show the unit, Brian. We've got, I've got a little small town I live in, Jenkins. You mentioned the water thing. We get these little scales, papers that's got these little scales. You know what they say? Shoot, don't drink the water. The people come do the testing, they say, "Don't drink the water." There's fish in the little thing, and the kids go down fishing. They say, "You can eat one because don't drink the water." So is there a problem with the water? And what's the problem? Our problem? Trash, garbage, that's the main thing. And we can try our best to clean things up unless there's something done. I'll give you, for instance, I lived in Chattanooga, Tennessee. And my area, I was an insurance salesman. In my area that I went to, they separated. You're a white guy, you're going to go to the white area. And we had 38 people, half were white, half were black. The black people went to the black, the white people went to the white. Well, I was new in town, so when someone would call, I would just go wherever. Didn't make no difference. I was in the hood and didn't know it, had no idea. I moved there and started selling insurance, right this center in the hood. And one of the guys come up to me and he said, "Do you know where you've been?" And I said, "No, I have no idea." He said, "When you go home, I want you to do me a favor. Watch the 6 o'clock or the 11 o'clock news." So I get on, and he said, "Look at the street." So I get on there, and I'm looking in the street, and there's two, three, four people killed every night on that street that this guy was walking through, that, you know, Oreo was walking through. And I had no idea. So they moved me to, and they said, "You do not go to that area." Right? So they moved me to an area that was prominent white, except for one little old bitty place. And most of those people that were in that place were black. But they was great people, but they were black. And I was wondering, I said, "How come these people all around here..." You know the Little Debbie's, the cakes that we get? That's where they make the Little Debbie cakes at, where I was at. So whenever you got, drive down 75 before you get to Chattanooga, if you roll your window down, you can smell the factory when you're going through. And I'm out, and I get out of the factory, and this very, very bad stench comes up. And I'm wondering, "What's that smell?" And I go to this lady, and she's like, "Well, what smell?" So I go to my next one, they're black. I go to the next one, and I said, "That smell, what's that smell?" And she's like, "What smell?" They had lived there so long, they didn't know the smell. They had taken these black people and put them on top of a landfill and covered it up with dirt and let them come and put houses on it. And that's where these people were living at. Now, I tell you that, we had a problem that arose up in Detroit, Michigan. They got a power, an incinerator there that puts off carbon, that puts off methane. All this thing does within, I think it's what, two-mile radius? The air, you ever know that the wind blows in one direction? And when it blows in a different direction, there's a storm coming. But for the majority, our wind comes west to east. Right? Storms come west to east. Up there, the air comes right by that incinerator. It's killing everybody up there. The air blowing by. The children have got asthma. Now the children, as they get 16, they've got lung problems. So we called them and told them we had the answer to the problem. We could fix them. And they said, "Not until people have got 15,000 votes on a sheet of paper" that they have come, and they go and register, they can put it on. Until then, until we have people dying, we're not going to do anything. So he said, "When people start dying and they vote, we'll call you." And I said, "What about until then?" He said, "We ain't calling you." So these big incinerators have got one thing and one thing only. They're owned in Russia and Germany, and they could care less about us. This plant can go anywhere, doesn't make no difference. Last year, Florida, the hurricane come through, Texas. What are you doing in Texas, you know? Texas was absolutely wild, destroyed. And the worst storm that has ever been, the costliest storm that has ever been. So what are you going to do if you're stuck? Everything has to be wild. Where are you going to put it at? Now, even here, all this goes in here. This is the process that comes through that burns. It separates, the material comes out, even tires. Everything comes out of it. These are generators. You can take this and put it on a beach somewhere where there's a problem. Doesn't make any difference. Now, we've got a little old bitty small town. Anybody know where Jenkins is at? One of the smallest cities in the state of Kentucky. And they are by one. Already on the board and getting their paperwork done to buy one. Now, here's a big thing with these, with this Phoenix. You put the garbage in, and you're eliminating the garbage problem, right? You're eliminating the money that the city is going to have to pay, that the county is going to have to pay. You're eliminating that, right? Now, if that would be good enough, if that was just good enough, right? But it's not. Now, we have power system that comes off that grid and that burning. Every ton of garbage that goes in generates $25 worth of electricity that you can turn around and sell right back to AEP. So it's a win, win, win. Now, what's the only problem that we always have with the water? Always was up in Virginia. As I worked up in Virginia, as you come down, you can see the milk jugs up in the trees, the diapers in the trees, the gallon jugs. Do you know, have any idea? Because I never actually pursued this because I worked 25 years underground in a coal mines. And I know, and I treated water. I had six different ponds to treat water every day, all day, all day long, to try to treat the water, just to make it feasible for people. And actually had some guys that people have been told this, and they said there was chemicals in the water, and they went down and they took their glasses and put their glasses in the water and picked it back up and put it on, and said it broke their nose out and had lawsuits, which there wasn't. So there's always been a problem with what? Garbage and what? You guys have the water system. And our system has cleaned up, has it not? Since the coal has lessened up, our system has cleaned up. I've been on the boat, I've done the whole thing, what you're talking about, the whole canoeing thing, the whole thing. Now, we have to do something to clean up our whole area. Everything that we got, every job that will be, will be right here, every job. Nothing is going anywhere. Everything's going to be right here. It is here, it's impressive, but the jobs are going to be in Eastern Kentucky. The jobs are not going to go anywhere else but right here. And that's the way we want. You may not know, but maybe your sister, brother, and uncle or something may be working for us. And our big thing is, what this whole thing is, is helping people out. It's a Christian-based organization. And we have money, we give money, and we're going to give money. We have people in this area that are absolutely starving to death. And people are dying every day. Our families are have people dying every day. One of the biggest reasons why is what? Drugs. How come? How come? No job? No hope? And I have been a pastor for 15 years in a drug rehab center and have seen over 10,000 men come in and go. And you know what the number one thing is? I felt unworthy. And my wife left me, I never seen my children, everything was gone, you know? The job went, so we have to do, come together. We come together, we everyone have to come together. And if you sit and look at, I could tell you about this Phoenix, and I could give you reports, I could tell you that. A water bottle takes 1,000 years to disintegrate in a landfill. The plastic bags we get at Walmart, 1,000 years. We ain't going to be here for 1,000 years, but that's how long it takes. But this plant will take anything and everything. Now we have sewer, we have our sewer lines, we have our sewer system. That stuff that's left out of the sewer system, you can put it right back in here. Everything goes here, everything is here, everything. So we need to strive, like I said, we all need to strive together, right? All need to come together. And we all need to know fully well, we need jobs, we need people, and we need families. You're not going to see anybody on a canoe, on the water, if everybody leaves and everybody's gone. Letcher County, Letcher County had 1,700 people in their school, the kids in their school. You know how many they got now? 800. Shelby Valley had 1,100 kids. You know how many they got now? 460. Wonder why? Everybody's gone. We have to get our people back here. And our whole economy will grow and leaps about. Amen? The battery place is coming up, the Silver Thornton coming up, that's coming up in Pottel. Pottel shouldn't be the only place that's getting this. Floyd County should be getting these places. Johnson County should be getting these places. We all need these places, but we all have to come together to get these places, all of us. Amen? We all have to. Short and sweet.
Quick question. Quick question. You mentioned sewage. Did you run sewage through that?
Yes.
When you run your sewage through, let me, I'm not going to get gross or anything.
That's a big issue we have right here.
When you've got, your sewer is run through your plant. We've got one down here in Preston's work, right? Right outside the college, the sewer plant comes through a purifier. When that goes through its system, they call them patties. Well, I didn't go poop, but that's what they call them. That has to be done away with. That goes in here. That stuff can be put here. And that's that whole purification. Jenkins, let me explain this to you. Jenkins has a $6,000 a month garbage field that they have to pay $50 a ton, and they're online to buy this, okay? I go over to Norton, Virginia, you know how much theirs is a year? $3 million. Jenkins is 72,000. Norton, 3 million. And I go over to offer this plant to them. So that's, you know, what it can do and how it can do. But the good thing about it is, what got me on board with Chris and everything, the whole thing is, is jobs, jobs, jobs. Because I seen my best friends leave to go to Pennsylvania, to Alabama, to work. I've seen my family pull up, and I go up, and they're like, "Where are you going?" "U-Haul." U-Hauls, U-Hauls. And I just got sick and tired of it. Something's got to give, and it's up to us to do something. And if you've got, if we've got 800 people coming to the battery place in two years, the Blue Tech, how many more people is that going to be? You times that by two or three. That's how many more people is going to be in Pottel, in Pike County. They're all not going to be in Pike County. They're all not going to live there. They're going to be in different places. So they're going to be doing more recreational things. They're going to be in the water. The Brex Interstate Park is one of the biggest, well, unknown that there is in Eastern Kentucky. One of the most beautiful places there is, one of the most beautiful places to go and to do everything that you guys are talking about. So once again, once we get jobs, once we get people, once, and this has to be laid out already. You get people, what's the draw to Eastern Kentucky? You know, everybody thinks we're wild, dumb hillbillies. That's what everybody thinks, you know? They're just dumb hillbillys. Until they get here and they see and they look and they understand. They're very, what is it called? Precious people, we are. Yet we were back 30, 40 years ago, you know? You step on my land, I'll shoot you. You move my pole, I'll shoot you. You move my fence, I'll shoot you. That's not such a case anymore.
Thank the Lord.
You know? And I will go somewhere and they'll say, "Where are you from?" And I'm like, "Eastern Kentucky." Let's take a step back, you know, stuff. I'm like, "No."
Until they start to hear a little bit of what this does, and then like, "What planet are you from? Where have you all been? Where you all been at?"
I want to tell you guys something, and I don't mean this in a bad way, because like I said, I mean, this is very important. But this drug problem is more important than anything that we're faced with because your brothers, your sister, your uncle, your own family, your mom and dad that you don't even know about. All right, so when, and I was telling Chris and Brian this. A lot of people don't know this. Let's take the meth. Let's take the meth. Let's take the, the bath salt, all this stuff and everything that they've come up with, right? All this stuff. Now, they took this stuff and they took it up and they took it to Harvard, they took it to Yale, and they took it to Brown. And they set this stuff down in like these little containers, these three containers out here, and they set it down. And they pulled two professors from each college. And they brought them in and they set them down and they told them, said, "Here, we want you to take this, and you take this and this and this, and you take it back, and we want you to do your research on this. And you tell us how long it would take you to come up with this." So they went, there's Harvard, Yale, and Brown, three of the most prominent. They come back three weeks later and they said, "It would probably take us a year, a year and a half to come up with this." The whole thing to make this. And they said, "They have some people in West Virginia, and people in Kentucky, and people in Tennessee come up with this in three days." And they said, "There's no way." And they said, "They're the brilliant minds going to waste." And they are, that's what's here, you know? So, like I said, your, the canoeing thing, everything, everything that we have, everything that we got going on, the streams, everything, all this coal incites together. We have to clean everything up.
What does one of those units cost?
It all depends. In this area, it's around a six to seven, uh, hundred, what, six or seven?
Six, seven hundred thousand. If you have a watch, you need to do it for it. The base unit does several things, but there's things you can add to it that does other things. It's so versatile, it can do so many things.
But the, but the big thing is that Jenkins, the guy in Jenkins is a businessman. And he could see taking the six thousand dollars a month, putting it in his plant, and then turn around and sell him the power back for twenty-five dollars a ton. Every ton that goes in makes twenty-five dollars to each one. There is a big industrial park up there. Seventy-five acres, big industrial park. They're gonna set this right dead center, right in the end of it, I mean, right on the point of it, put it on the point, and then all the factories that are coming in up there, they're gonna feed the power to them off the grid off of this. So they're gonna take, here's the thing, our garbage is gone. Our garbage, you know where our garbage goes to? Our garbage, our garbage is in a, in a lock, goes from Jenkins and then the county line, it goes all the way to London.
I'm really concerned, I'm really intrigued by this, and this is brilliant. How long would it take, something like that, to clean out the sewage problem we have here in this table? We can't, we can't get industry in here because we can't tap on to get any...
Well, you're not.
We're at full capacity.
What this will do is this takes the solid waste material that right now you have to pack up and send to a landfill.
You're talking, you're talking about solid waste, period.
I'm just talking about, our town is in dire straits right now because we can't get any industry in here. We have been cut off from the states, from any towns. We can't get any jobs, we can't get anything until we upgrade our sewage system.
Yep, so I'm, so I'm glad you mentioned that. Now, I'll tell you something that happened. Already know, me and Ray Jones, we've already talked about this whole thing. Alright, now let me give you, let me give you a little bit of for instance, because I'm going, I'm getting away from this, but I'm getting into Paintsville and Johnson City and Floyd County. Because you can't get nobody here unless you've got water, sewer, and electricity. Those three things have gotta be. If you don't have that with the infrastructure, you can have all the land in the world, but nothing's gonna be. So up in, what they're calling, up where the Olos used to be, where silver liners gone, where Blue Tech, Blue Tech is gone. That is, that, that whole place, it costed them, the city of Potwell, it costed them millions of dollars to go in and put sewer in, water in, electricity in up there. The city paid for it. Now, here's the big thing. Guess where, guess where the plant, that whole facility is gonna be? You know where it's at? In the county. So you know what the city gets out of it? Nothing. They don't get one penny out of it, not one thing. But, you see, everything that you see, if it's, if your vision is right here, if you're the smartest person in your group, you need a new group.
They're gonna reap the benefits.
So, what's in Potwell? Do you go to Potwell? You been there lately?
Yep, this morning.
With the, there's restaurants, 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 and more restaurants being built, and more restaurants that's gonna be built. So the city of Potwell is gonna walk, reap all the reward for it all. So, if Johnson County gets businesses in this area, where they, they, if there's, you go up the road, you go on the four lane. If we're on the four lane from Floyd County to Paintsville, how many restaurants are they on that four lane? None. Where they gonna have to come to? Here or Floyd County, right, Pressesburg or Paintsville, one of the two. Alright, so the new road's going through. They're building a new road from, uh, I see, Millard, no, not Millard, through Millard up to, it's 119, it's going this way, 80 is going this other way. Two new four lanes going through. So when they get their money this time, let me tell you what happened. And maybe there's something that can help you. This time, when the roads go through, they have come up and they had to put a, a bridge through. Leslie Combs was part of the bridge right there that would, Leslie and Ray was part, they put a bridge across La Viza, where'd she go? What you want me to call it? Across the river, Big Sandy. They put a bridge across, they had to get grant money to do it, right? Okay, so when they get, they get the money, they have to get the money for the bridge, and then they have to go up and do the access with the water, the sewer, and electricity. Now, 119 and 80 is going through, they already, when they're doing their work, roadwork, they went up, you know what they done? They said, "We need a bridge over here, part of the funding that come through, we need a bridge that goes across just to take the waste." You drive a truck, rock truck, and the spillage that comes off of it? So now, guess who's paid for it? The government has paid for that bridge to go across. So now, as they're going through, you know what's up there? Water, sewer, and electricity. And guess who paid for it? Our government. For the first time, I've ever seen the government actually done something, and they didn't know what they was doing. But it was for the benefit, for the benefit of the people. So, we need to do, get on board this whole thing with you guys. And sit down with you guys and do everything that we can with our process to do what we can to do. Because now, when I price this plant to someone out of state, it's one million dollars.
Or more.
But here, it's not. Because we need jobs, we need people, and we need the help.
Have you got any in place already?
We got, well, the one is actually getting ready to be built, the...
For Jenkins.
Yeah, for Jenkins. And like I said, here's the big thing.
Are you gonna build out?
Johnson Industries.
Oh, I know.
Everything's here.
Oh, yeah.
They're friends about it.
Well, they are too, but that's my family.
They're Johnson? Oh, he's one of my dearest friends.
But that's that whole thing like we had talked about. Everything stays, everything stays here.
They're wonderful people.
Yep, everything stays here.
They're very Christian-based.
Yeah, they're, they're great people, yeah, they are.
We also have an initial agreement with a city in South Carolina to build a huge plant for them.
Is it possible to get one here?
Well, these, the big plant...
The big plants are talking millions of dollars.
We're not talking, we're not talking about a product, we're talking about the plant that will process the garbage.
Oh, that's what you're talking about. Oh, the problem, no, we don't want any garbage processed.
Well, actually, this is what you, the thing is, you gotta understand, this destroy, this process...
This doesn't do what this, this is not an incinerator.
Oh, I know that.
What comes out the other end is sand.
But we've got the big plant, we've, we've got a big plant and a small plant.
How, how much would that process of sewage in a, in like a...
We would need to do some figuring with what your teams are.
Some analysis as well.
Cause we want to make sure we give you exact numbers. We don't want to...
Okay, here's, here's for instance. The one, the garbage that goes in, a ton of garbage that goes in, I told you twenty-five dollars, right? It's actually more than that. But to say, to keep everything straight and to say that we would not lie about anything, you're actually gonna generate, the more bags, the more that raises. Now, we've also got the stepping for coal, to help coal, to purify the coal plants. But we're under, we're under regulation. EPA with this plant, here's, here's the, let me, let me get this for you. The EPA with this plant, you see this little thing right here? That's called a plan on walk. Bingo. You know what that does? That eliminates the EPA, because...
Yeah, it's not permanent.
Right.
Yep, because, and when this plant is set, wherever this plant goes, that trailer, or a trailer on wheels will be there.
So, technically, always consider...
No EPA problem. You go and get a fifty dollar permit or grant, whatever it is, and that's taken care of. So like I said...
But this doesn't, this, this process, there is no toxins released from it, none, what?
Zero.
Extremely eco-friendly. Plus it, plus it produces recyclables from all those materials you put in, which creates another revenue stream for whoever buys it.
And the silicon that comes out of it, which is what, after you've done, and there's not a lot of it left, don't get me wrong. But what is left can actually be used on roads for, as a, to help tractioning on roads.
There's a white, black material that Mountain Enterprise has already pegged and begged for the material. Because the material goes into the blacktop, it strengthens the blacktop, one-fourth more strength. And it, you know how you're driving down the road and, and all of a sudden you hit your brakes and you slide a little bit? Uh, that's what the, it does the grit, the whole thing and stuff in it.
It's like fibers, it's like rubber and glass.
Yes, ma'am. It changes the whole, changes the whole texture in blacktop, the whole thing.
You see our...
Yeah, I see, absolutely, yeah.
But now, these generators, let me say, these are generators, these can go like in Puerto Rico, which is still right now starving for water. Uh, that, that plant right there can go and, and generate, you see, all these little islands that we have, you know the islands that you, the Bora Bora and Puerto Rico and all these places that you go? You know, they have no power. Everything is run off of generators. And every bit of it is generated off of diesel fuel. And how many times do you hear we had a diesel fuel spillage? Well, this takes the problem, if you remember the Olympics, and you remember it was in, what's the big old place that's got Jesus up on top of there?
Real.
So do you know when they had the swimming and the canoeing? Remember when they had the canoeing? You know what they had to do? They had to postpone the canoeing four hours. You wanna know why? Because of the garbage.
Yeah, that's a shame.
Because of all the garbage. And they had been guided a grant of twenty billion dollars to purify and clean up their whole island, a grant, and they didn't do it.
How, how large is it?
That's a trailer. You see the eighteen, eighteen-wheeler flat trailer? That's it.
It's forty...
Forty, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight feet.
And depending upon what you need, it can be engineered as big or as small as you need it.
Let me, let me give God the glory here. Because you can, and you're right, it is brilliant. This, this is the result of my pastor being in a church service and God downloading to him fact.
The formulas that make...
Everything that makes it work, God gave it straight to him in a church service.
But that wasn't all. So he goes to Israel.
Yes.
And he's in Israel, and he finds out that Israel has a problem during a little conversation. Uh, if you know anything about the Bible, read the Bible or anything, if you're in Israel in these countries, you know how you're rich by the animals that you have. Ever have any animals that you've got? The same thing's in Israel now. What happens in the summertime if you've got a thousand head of goat and sheep? Uh, and you're in Israel and there's all these, what do they do? Use the bathroom. What happens during, it gets about a hundred degrees and the smell, all that stuff? So they had a problem. And they didn't know what to do because all their tourists had quit coming. And as, people couldn't stand the smell. They come at a certain time of the year when the smell with them.
Oh, that the flies and insects.
Oh, yeah. So he hears, the pastor, he hears this conversation that's going on, and he gives them, he said, "I've got the answer to your problem." And he gives them the disc with all the schematics on it. They get them, they take it, they work the whole problem, and they said, "We'll have it back to you in two years." And he told me it exactly, two years, UPS pulled up and they brought it in and they gave it back to them. So, if you're ever gonna get blessed with anything, bless Israel.
Bless Israel first.
And here is the star step of this whole thing, the whole thing. How much, how powerful would it be? Cause they built, and I'm done. They, they built a big incinerator down in Florida. And all the people said, "It's a great thing because we have to do something." Well, what about all the gases that's coming off of it? And they said, "What about all the gases that was coming from the landfills?" Right? So this plant, you can pull this plant at your landfill, hook it up, and take the material that's in that landfill and bring it back and run it right back through and eliminate the landfill. But the place down in, in Florida, they're, they're crying now because of all the smell and everything that's going on. But if you had the Phoenix there, you could load it up, take it to another place, put it in another place, and start your whole process over again. Well, that's not the right place. When you pay, they paid six hundred and seventy million dollars for that incinerator. So if you take, if you take this seven, eight hundred thousand dollar plant and you don't like it, you don't like it right here, move it over here. You don't like it there, move it over there. If you pay six hundred and seventy million dollars for something, you're not moving it, you're stuck with it.
Plus, this, this unit will also, remember the Ebola outbreak a couple, two, three years ago? That unit had been developed then, could've been pulled right into it and gotten rid of that. Like if it all, all the Ebola, all the Ebola and all that contaminated and stuff right into it, and it's gone, it destroys it.
We just need to, we just need to, anybody that has got a problem with anything, we just need to sit down with them. We work our side, work our side, and try to do everything we can to fix the problem. Not cause a problem, but fix a problem.
Is Johnson Industries part, they're a partner in the way?
No, 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 no. They're just, they're just building, that's it. We don't have, we have no partners, none whatsoever. We are what we are, what you see here, pretty much is here, we've got some other people in place, but what you see is what you get.
Now, what is Johnson Industries building, building there, say?
What'd you say?
Johnson Industries.
At the place there in, in Holland. You know where they're at? That's where everything gonna be built at. And the plant that will be built in Jenkins will be there operable, that anybody wants to come look at anytime.
That's your transformation.
Yep, so...
Now, are these plants like, these mobile plants like a built-to-order kind of a...
No, 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 I'm built-to-order.
Well, they can be, they can be.
Yes, how you want them?
Yes.
Okay.
But now, the size, the size is a size.
Yes, it's a size.
It has to be, it has to be that distance, but the generators don't have to be on that. The generators are to go to a place...
It's not a mobile, you have to keep it at a certain...
All you have to do is generate the power into it one time. Then when you get it generated up, it will generate enough power to feed itself right back.
The same unit that we've got during less than, when we had the tornado, they had down here. All of the debris that's left over could be spent through this to produce power and get rid of the debris.
Listen, let me tell you what a big problem we got. Last weekend, a truck come through, Jenkins come down the hill, turn off going towards Whitesburg and flipped over. That eighteen-wheeler had nothing in it but chicken back. That's all it had in it. But guess what? Because that chicken back touched the ground, the EPA said it has to come to Ashland down to the disposable place. Now, if this plant is in Jenkins, only thing they had to do was break it one mile up and dump the stuff in the plant. But somebody had to pay thousands and thousands of dollars to have chicken back.
And this unit possibly made us, there's a larger unit that is still portable and it is actually retailers.
Cause depending upon what you need, we engineer. Supply and need.
I'm gonna cut you all off.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Um, I know everybody's getting ready to, to head out, and I wanted to, I wanted to thank Chris and, and her, her partners for coming and letting us know about this. Get online, look at this information, think about it, share this information with people. Maybe this is not your town's, their, their town's answer, your town's answer, but it's somebody's answer.
Yeah.
And the only way we, we're gonna fix problems is if we keep trying to address them.
Yes, absolutely.
So, real quick, let me, for you, those of you who do not know who Danny is, Danny Price is our Johnson County Jeep Club, and they're everywhere. They're everywhere, they're in Pike County, they're in Floyd County, they're everywhere. Y'all in Lawrence County yet?
Yeah.
Well, they're in Lawrence County. They're doing all kinds of good stuff. Get on their Facebook page and check out what they're doing because these are good community civic partners, and we're blessed to have them as Trail Town Partners too. We have a, the first ever Johnson County Jeep Jam.
Wow!
Coming up on June eighth, ninth, and tenth. This is a three-day event. The big events down in, that you all go to in Tennessee, how many people, how many people does that bring in?
Seven thousand Jeeps last year.
Seven thousand Jeeps.
Unreal.
So, do some mental math here, what's the economic impact of having... So, do some mental math here, what's the economic impact of having the Jeep Jam? That's the economic impact. Coming up, we have April the 10th, Trail Town Summit at Morehead. Anybody that wants to go to this summit, everybody from the state will be there, come, or send me a message to see how you can come and go. Everybody's welcome. It's a great place to network, it's a great place to get your ideas out there for things that you're interested in. It's a very good place for Jeepers. So if you're interested, send me a message. April 14th, Tidy the Trail. We have 75 people signed up now to participate in Tidy the Trail. We're doing the, the Tidy Trail Teams like we did last year, making a competition out of it. So if you've got a little team that wants to get together, pick up some garbage and tie it, fill it with ribbon on it, we'll have, we'll have some good giveaways. April the 29th is gonna be our first Trail Town hike of the year and that's hiking the ODC. That's the outdoor classroom. May 12th, first laid back on the lake. You get to come out and kayak, we're gonna have a kayak race out to the island and back. We have already had a kayak donated to Raffle Off. So come out, take your chance, win a year kayak. And he sets good, it's one of them that don't make you butt, I like it. Uh, and then Johnson County Jeep Jam. And get on their page and find out what they're doing because they got all kinds of cool stuff going on.
You gotta ride this weekend, don't you?
Yeah, we did, we have the Scotty Hamilton Memorial Ride. If everybody shows up that says they're coming, we'll have 154 Jeeps.
Good.
Go way through, they leave here, go up, uh, 321, pick up Route 3, hit 645, pick up 40 through, uh, Martin County, go up 292, all the way through to South Williamson, pick up, uh, 119 there, come down to Town Mountain Road in Pikeville, we'll go around town and make a, a loop through their, what they call their parade run and wind up over at Pikeville, uh, City Police Department where we're gonna do a presentation of all proceeds and we have a, a really nice gift for the widow of Officer Hamilton. With 154 Jeeps for that event, I'm hoping we can really boil out the water with Jeepers.
I think we can, we Jeep Jam. We've, we've got two bands playing Friday night, we've got, how many vendors are signed up now?
Let me tell you, I've had to acquire the campus of both Johnson Central and Johnson County Middle School.
For vendors?
For vendors and for events that is planned for that, that Friday and, and Saturday.
Saturday they do their poker run and it's pretty, the first one they did was pretty impressive, this one's gonna be,
Yeah, we did, we do a poker run for KSP Trooper Island. And last year we raised a little over $4,000.
That's great.
This year we'll hopefully double it.
The, the Friday event, we're gonna have everything from a Jeep show to obstacle course, to balance boards, uh, to a drop top contest. It's gonna be all kinds of things and even for the little kids, cause we're so family oriented, we're gonna do the Power Wheels Jeeps.
I love it.
Races with the babies. So it's gonna be all kinds.
And for those still inclined, music lovers, that night down in Paint Creek Park, um, Friday night we'll have, uh, two, two really good bands. And that's our Trail Town fundraiser, so come out and help us, uh, help us make some money so that we can keep doing things we're doing. There'll also be, um, a barbecue pull-up from our partners in Martin County will be there with their barbecue wagon and if you ain't never eat it, there's some goo stuff. Yeah, that make you lose your diet.
Yes.
Pick a number between 1 and 20. Oh, thank you. Number 6, thank you. Uh, let's see. Count down six people and tell me who you got, Ms. Anes. Kevin Horn. Kevin Horn!
What do you win? What do we win?
Bloom where you planted, man. Okay, uh, Danny, pick a number 21, 20. Ms. Anes, who do we got?
Kay Hall, she's not here.
Pick another one.
Dag on it.
13.
13.
Gary Castle, not here, he's already went home. Okay, too bad for him.
Two.
Tyler Rapp.
That would be two. Uh, Tyler, if y'all don't know, he's here on, uh, behalf of, uh, of, of the mayor from Colderun Village. And, uh, so he's here representing their bunch tonight and they signed the, the compact. Open it up, cause you're gonna love it.
Are you here on behalf of, uh,
Oh, sorry.
Andrew?
Yeah.
Andrew is Anes' other son.
Son from another brother.
Next meeting. Just add water! All right, next meeting is April the 24th. At that meeting, we will have, uh, representatives from the Department of Local Government and the Kentucky Mountain Regional Recreation Board is gonna be joining us. So come and be with us and figure, and find out all the cool stuff going on in Kentucky that's, uh, that's rebuilding our post-coal economy. Thank you all, I appreciate you so much.